This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, September the 30th. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Bobby Morton, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's right. Almighty God, as we come before you, we just thank you for this day and a day that you have created for each and every one of us and the time for us to come together. And we just come before you this morning, asking for your wisdom, your guidance, and the decisions. We thank you for our city here. We thank you for the city officials that are here and each and every one that's here. And Lord, I just pray that this morning you would guide our thoughts, that we might honor you in all that we say and all that we do, that would improve our city that you blessed us with, and just guide our steps in a way that would be pleasing to you this morning and just give a piece about this place. And we ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our September 30th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibration position, the off or the vibration position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing this council, you must, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to a council on an agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than the Thursday prior to the council meeting by 2:00 PM. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified, retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given a proper note to the city clerk office and wish to speak on an agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the call, there will be known due applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. Good to see everyone. Thank you for being here. I have several announcements this morning and possibly one proclamation. Does anyone here from Mercy Life, Mercy Life? Yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure. So I do have a proclamation that I'll read. The first announcement has to do with this morning Governor Ivy made her most recent announcement of Go Mesa Grants. There was $7.5 million granted to the city of Mobile. $3.5 million of that will go toward building an access road into Brookley by the Bay Park, which is a huge step forward because we've got to have the proper access to that park to be able to complete building it out. And it will be one of the keys to getting things done. So really, really appreciative of that. This four million will be supporting the improvements along the downtown waterfront to help and strengthen the infrastructure, extending the bulkhead. And when I say extending the bulkhead, that'll be extending it from the convention center going north into the area where the proposed hotel would be located, just on the north side of the convention center. And also build a connecting boardwalk coming south down into Cooper Riverside Park. I want to thank Governor Ivy and Commissioner Blankenship for their continued support of the major projects in Mobile. I remind you that several years ago, just want to make sure I'm right, that Governor Ivy, probably in 2020, we were granted $16 million from Go Mesa for Brookley by the Bay, and then another $15.5 came from the State Economic Development Fund. And so over the last several years, Governor Ivy has done an incredible job of directing funds to major projects in the city of Mobile. And for that, we'll have benefits for generations to come. And so we're tremendously grateful for her continued interest in the city of Mobile. So the second announcement has to do with the downtown street optimization project. Last week, Warren Street and a section of Dearborn Street were converted from one-way to two-way traffic. Proud to report that the traffic's moving smoothly in both directions using a yield-flow model where vehicles can still park on either side of the street. The goal of these changes, to slow traffic, improve pedestrian safety, and make businesses more accessible. This week crews are installing a new curb ramp and sidewalks along Royal Street. You'll see the construction cones and see where the concrete's been knocked out. All of that's being done as part of ADA, some of the ADA compliance that we have to do. And the downtown alliance is working proactively with us to make sure all that's being done in the manner it should be. If you want to find out more information about that work that's going on, you can go to the citymobile.org or the city social media websites. Just pick it up on social media. The last one has to do with the 27th Annual Dolphin Street Beer Festival. Tickets are still available for the 27th Annual Dolphin Street Beer Festival this Saturday, October 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. You'll see hundreds of Mobileans and visitors gathering to try 48 craft beers at 12 local bars and restaurants. The festival's a favorite among craft beer enthusiasts, and it's a great way to explore downtown and support our local businesses. The tickets are $35 and can be purchased at beerfestmobile.com or through any of the participating businesses. So at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation for the Sisters of Mercy regarding Mercy Day. And is Catherine Overton, Sister Marilyn Graff, Gemma Phillips, and Michael Goddard Chapel? Is it just one? Are you the only one? Or will you please come to the podium? And are you Ms. Overton?
No, I'm Phillips.
Ms. Phillips, okay. I apologize for that. Thank you very much for being here. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Mercy Life of Alabama, serving in the tradition of the Sisters of Mercy and Trinity Health, opened their doors to our community in 2011, and whereas the holistic community-based model of care, which is the only PACE program in the state of Alabama, supports our elders by helping them remain in their homes, and whereas Mercy Day signifies the opening of the very first House of Mercy on September 24th, 1827, in Dublin Island, which was started by Catherine McAlley, founder, founderess of the Sisters of Mercy, who moved to Mobile in 1884 to provide education and health care to our community, and whereas Mercy Life of Alabama's commitment to providing compassionate care to elders in our community by aiding and keeping them safely home with their families demonstrates Mercy Life's important mission. Now therefore, I William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim last week, September 24th, 2025, as Mercy Day in the city of Mobile." Congratulations, Ms. Phillips. Thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I want to give a big shout to Ms. Phillips and Mercy Life. They are located in the great District 1, the only PACE program in the state of Alabama. If you haven't had the opportunity, I ask you to go and visit Mercy Life. I have been there multiple, I was there probably about a month ago. Go visit, see the great work that they're doing in the community and in this state. And so thank you so much, Ms. Phillips, for everything that you're doing, and Mercy Life.
Thank you, Councilman Penn.
I'd like to say also to Ms. Phillips, she's a very, very important person in our community. Not only that she works for the facilities, but she's also as an actor. So many times you may go to different places in the city of Mobile and you see actress, excuse me, thank you, and seeing her playing different roles, but I appreciate everything that you do in our community.
Thank you so much for this proclamation to our mayor and to all the council members. We appreciate it. And we're just helping our seniors stay in the community by doing that. And we're servicing seniors 55 or older, and we service the Mobile County area as well as the Baldwin County area. So thank you again for this recognition.
Thank you.
That concludes my remarks, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Clerk. If I could ask the coach and the ladies of the First Bishop State Flag Football Team to please come to the podium as I read a proclamation for you. You can come right here in front of us if you'd like. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you, get the guys, to the Bishop State's first flag football team for girls. As so many of us that are athletes from the 1980s and 90s know that it was so difficult to have athletic programs for girls, and a program called Title IX was started in major universities to make sure that there was a team for girls as equal as part, as many parts as there for guys. And our nation then put in place these programs, but being that Bishop State has gone another step forward and actually has a girls' flag football team, it's tremendous. So I'd like to read this proclamation for them. Whereas women's flag football is one of the fastest-growing sports in the country with a rapid expansion at high school and collegiate levels. And whereas the sports inclusion in the 2028 Olympic Games in Los Angeles underscores its growing international recognition and importance. And whereas the Alabama Community College Conference is among the first in the nation to offer sports at the community college level, giving student-athletes new pathways for competition, scholarship, and leadership. And whereas it is vital to spotlight these trailblazing athletes as well as highlight women's sports in hope to inspire the next generation of women to pursue athletics at every level. Now therefore, I William Carroll, Councilman of District 2, and the members of the Mobile City Council do hereby recognize and celebrate Bishop State Community College's first women's flag football team. Done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, on the 30th of September. Congratulations, guys. Mr. President, it's always a pleasure to have a president of Bishop State in our audience too, seeing that he visits us from time to time. Thank you for stopping by today too, sir. Good to have you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Congratulations to Bishop State. Of course, I don't know if you know this, but Bishop State is hitting enrollment numbers like never before. I believe right now they are at over 4,500 students, if that's correct. That's correct. Can we give a big hand for the leadership at Bishop State Community College? I mean, that's amazing. Right here in the city of Mobile, the jewel, the yard on the broad, it's just, I mean, it's just amazing to have that type of workforce development and opportunity right here in our city. So thank you to the leadership of Bishop State. Thank you to President Charles for everything that you're doing to move our community college forward.
Monthly finance reports.
Mr. President, Members of Council, Mayor, I want to continue our exciting morning with financial report. This is a report for the month of August, or the month that ended August 31st, 2025. The document you have in front of you includes some highlights from that. You'll see on page one, our beginning balance for the month was $194,703,982. Of that, $58,626.210 was our reserve fund. Our operating balance was $116,565,408 throughout the month. Our, our ending balance decreased just slightly as we anticipated it would. We're at the lean time of year for our revenues. Our expenses remained relatively flat. Our ending balance for the month was $188,868,701. Again, we have a static amount of money in our reserve fund, $58,626,210. Our general fund operating balance ended the month at $109,569,670. We anticipate that through the month of September, that will decline. Again, it's a standard part of our cash flow model for the year. We anticipate to see that number will be right around $100 million for the fiscal year that ends on September 30th, 2025. The next page, you see page two, specific to some of our revenue. You'll see year-to-date, prior year, and year-to-date budget highlighted. Our actual year-to-date revenues on sales taxes were $184,905,999. I remind you, as I have in the past, that number is offset by just over $1 million in refunds that we had to apply for the year. So our actual revenues, if you go back and apply that refund, less the offset revenues were just over $186 million. Prior year-to-date, $186,449,866. And year-to-date budget was $188,188,181,466. On the following page, page three, at the top of the page, you'll see our business license. Our business license is actually up a little for the year that funded the offset. Our year-to-date actual and business license is $55,011,846. Prior year-to-date, $52,494,74. And our year-to-date budget was $52,730,507. If you combine those revenues along with the other, our revenues are effectively flat as we knew they would be for the course of this fiscal year. On the next page, page three, or page four, toward the bottom of the page, again, you'll see year-to-date actuals, year-to-date prior year, and year-to-date budget. Our year-to-date total revenues were $331,858,391. Prior year-to-date, $326,148,389. And our year-to-date budget was $325,987,325. So we have seen a slight increase in our revenues overall. Our sales tax were effectively flat for the year. We're projecting the same for fiscal year '26. As we get into the revenues, we can flip over to the last page, which is the most important page for the revenues and the expenses. If you get to page number eight, the last page, you'll see our year-to-date, again, prior year-to-date and our year-to-date budget. Total expenditures for the year, $249,661. Prior year, $245,438. Year-to-date budget, $287,888 and $0.71. To the right of that, if you just continue across that line, you'll see a number that is of importance for our fiscal year reporting, $29,379,653. That's the net we are for the year if you take our revenues, less our expenditures. The conversations we've had about that in the past is where did those dollars come from? And that was related to capital transfers in 2024. There were budgeted in '25, but not required. For your '26 budget that was just adopted, you'll recall that we had a carryover of cash to balance a budget of $29,991,309. That $29 million is made up substantially from the $29 million that you see over to the right. The ZOBBI Act clearly allows for transfers of dollars from prior year into the next fiscal year to be used in that fiscal year budget. So while we did move money out of checking or projected to over the course of the year, that is a source of those dollars. So you're taking dollars that were in this year's budget applying in the next year's budget. The cash flow nearly matches. We do anticipate that that $29 million will be reduced some over the course of the next, the next 45 days, but substantially level to what we budgeted for the budget for fiscal year '26. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you have about August. Our fiscal year closes today. We'll begin the auditing process starting next week, and we have provided you an un-audited financial statement at our October meeting.
Mr. President. Mr. Penn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for giving us the update on the budget. I did have a question on the expense of the year-to-date. We're around $249 million, but the year-to-date budget was $287, so we had a 13% below that. What is that?
So some of that, some of that will come back to us over the course of the next month. That, that number will stay the same. It will likely fall below 10%. We're going to have some expenditures that are just year-end expenditures. There'll be a police and fire pension transfer that takes place. There'll be some other transfers. So when we get to the September 30 financial report, you'll see that number shrink just a little. Part of that is just a natural progression of the cash flow across the year. This budget, this report only reflects the first 11 months, and there will be some 12-month transactions that reduce that number just a touch.
Okay. I know you speak of just a little. So that, I mean, we're still around about $38 million. Is there anything else that we didn't utilize? Is it salaries or is it anything else that make up that amount?
There are, there are some salaries and some operational expenses, which is why we went back to a different model of funding for fiscal year '26. You may recall that for the fiscal '26 budget, although there was an overall increase in that budget, we reduced operating expenses by just over $14 million. So in fiscal year '26, we did reduce those anticipated expenditures in order to balance the budget. So it's good news for '25. It did help us balance '26, but we did squeeze those operational costs down in the '26 budget.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And other council members. Thank you so much, Mr.
I do have one other document for you, just unrelated to the budget, but there's a two-page document that you see here. Just for informational purposes, that is a document, a series of line items out of the '26 budget that was recently adopted. We're in the process of condensing some of our cost centers to departments and divisions. We've had that conversation a few times. We did it in the finance department in the budget that you recently passed. We're going to bring a budget resolution to you that amends the budget that will collapse those cost centers in the fire department. I met with the fire department, public safety. That's going to be the first big department that we look to collapse. So when you see that resolution come to you, it will be in the form of a budget amendment, but there is no net cost increase or decrease. It is merely a collapsing of those divisions into one division or department. So when you see that, there's no budgetary impact whatsoever. It's just a, the first amendment that you'll see that collapses those divisions and cost centers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
My understanding you say that under this fire department heading, that these documents, these, these items will no longer show?
They will show as the fire department. They would, they would show as fire department.
So it'll just all be consolidated into one that says Fire Department?
Yes, sir. The divisions will still exist. They will still have those operational expenses within those divisions. Part of our dilemma when we're passing budgets, and we, we had this conversation briefly, if you look at what we do on our budget, we have 73 individual cost centers as a fiscal year 2024 year-end. To compare that to other cities, the city of Huntsville, the largest budget in the state, has 23. When we're working through the budgeting process, it just begins quite, it, it begins to be quite cumbersome to manage all of those cost centers and divisions, and we're working to simply consolidate those. The monies will still be available. The expenses will still be recorded. They will just be recorded in condensed line items.
As just Fire Department?
Yes, sir.
So we wouldn't be able to see that the fire suppression division, division is $2.5 million under budget operationally?
That's correct. It would be the total, total department. And we're working to progress so that we can see some cost savings to that. We think by collapsing those, there's some duplication of budgets that will allow us to reduce those budgets with no, with no reduction in services.
You, you'll still have line of sight to budgets of specific departments?
Yes, sir. We'll still see the divisions. Yes, sir.
Okay, but just on this summary sheet in our budget, we're not, just not going to see it?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
And other council members.
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
And on the train of thought of Mr. Reynolds, potentially though, is, is kind of the, you know, should the, should the next council choose to maybe hold a, hold a quarterly or mid-year kind of check-in for budget-wise, a finance committee meeting? I mean, these can be, these can be produced, you know, as we see it today, kind of a little bit more depth, I guess.
We could pull those out, yes, sir.
Okay. But that's always an option. So I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Second.
Proport to move and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at Old Canal Street on October 4th, on Adams Street on October 18th, on Virginia Street on October 4th, November 15th, and January 31st, and at Westminster Way on October 12th.
So move.
Second.
Proport to move and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 813 Lakeside Drive from B3 and I1 to B3.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to fix cause for demolition of the structures at 2002 Good Street and 1416 Old Shell Road.
This open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Queens, Victoria Howell and Savannah Jones.
Good morning, esteemed members of the city council, mayor, and all those who serve the great city of Mobile, which is home of the Miss Juneteenth America Scholarship Pageantry Program. My name is Savannah Jones, and I have the honor of serving as the 2025 Junior Miss Juneteenth America. It's a privilege to be here today, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to represent our city through this important program.
Good morning, council members, mayor, and administration. My name is Victoria Howell, and I'm your 2025 Teen Miss Juneteenth America on behalf of the Miss Juneteenth America Scholarship Pageantry Program. I'd like to thank you for your continuing service and leadership, and a special thanks to Councilwoman Small and Penn for attending our program. It was incredibly meaningful to have your presence and support. In just 100 days, this program has helped me grow ways I couldn't have imagined. I gained confidence in public speaking, a deeper appreciation for the history of Juneteenth, and I'm a better understanding of what it means to leave a purpose. Most importantly, I learned that my voice and the voices of women like me can truly make a difference.
Through this program, I've learned the meaning of Juneteenth, and why freedom is something we should never take for granted. I've also learned how to speak with courage and carry myself with pride, both on and off the stage.
During our first 100 days, we had the opportunity to be active and engaged within our community. We attended local events, participated in community service initiatives, and spoken to the youth about the legacy of Juneteenth. Wearing this crown is not just an honor, it's a responsibility to give back, and we've been proud to do so. As a part of our journey, we are preparing for a deeply meaningful trip to Galway. As a part of our journey, we are preparing for a deeply meaningful trip to Galveston, Texas, the birthplace of Juneteenth. Standing in a place where the final enslaved African-Americans were notified of their freedom is not just educational, it's power. This trip is a chance to reflect on history, connect with our young leaders, and represent our city with pride. As we continue our reign and prepare for Galveston, respectfully as for your support, be through, both through your presence and partnership. A modest donation from each council member will help us offset our costs related to our program and our education journey to Galveston. Every contribution, no matter the size, is an investment in the development and empowerment of our young leaders in our community.
Thank you for supporting young ladies like us and giving us a chance to shine in our crowns, grow into leaders and walk in our purpose.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our significance of our program and our growth, both personally and professionally. We are proud to represent the spirit of Juneteenth and the heart of this community. With your support, we'll continue to lead with excellence, purpose, and pride. We also welcome you to apply us to your respective districts who serve. We have our electronic business cards associated with you in making that request. Again, thank you and have a nice day.
Yeah, congratulations to you all, ladies, and thank y'all for making our community proud, oh, y'all.
Thank you.
Friend Odom.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Odom. I live at twenty-five twenty Cedar Point Road, Mobile, three-six-six oh-five zip code. I'm seventy-six years old, raised and still live on the family property that was bought by my great-grandparents eighty-five years ago. I went to Our Lady of Lourdes School, went to Bishop Tulon High School, graduated from the University of South Alabama with a business degree on an academic scholarship, and I worked for a local utility company for thirty-six years. I am literally old Mobile with humble roots. Graduated, my, my, my older son's father graduated with the second class of Mobile Fire Paramedics, Mobile Fire Department. His great-grandfather retired from the Mobile Police Department and then went on and retired from the Mobile County Sheriff's Department. My stepfather retired for Mobile Public Works as a heavy equipment operator. And I am not happy with what has happened in my city, with, with, what's going to happen with my grandchildren and my, uh, my own children. I ask, where is the transparency and the accountability? We have had nine million dollar overrun on parking garage, two million dollar overrun on the civic center demolition, four hundred thousand on a bronze Jimmy Buffett statue. How can we have drag queen shows in front of the old Catholic cathedral in Mobile with children in attendance? And how can we still have pornographic and gender grooming books in the children's section and teen's section of the Mobile Public Library?
Stick with the overruns and the glitches in the, in the elections.
What now?
Stick with the overruns and the glitches in the elections.
Well, when the city loses a half million dollars, uh, I guess we'll get in compliance with what our Alabama Public Library Association is asking us to do. So how do we get this accountability and transparency? Some of us have been called liars and racist when we speak up. Some of us have been told that you can't do anything about it. In a true republic, the people vote you out if you don't, and, and if you don't, and you bring, we bring new blood when what is right, we want what is right and won't answers. Well, this past city election had too many glitches and arrows. I feel that my vote and many others' votes did not count. We had some major precinct location changes two months prior to the election, which it was supposed to be a ninety-day cutoff. Many people showed up at the wrong precincts and were not given provisional ballots. Some tabulators broke down. During the runoff, some people went to a precinct where they voted a month prior and showed up as inactive. Do not tell me that you're sorry, or we fixed this or that problem. These irregularities are not acceptable. So when do we, the people, get transparency and accountability? And this is from the heart? I mean, uh, you know, this is me. I am Mobile, and I am not happy. So we need some changes. I want transparency and accountability. So to my children and grandchildren.
Uh, Mr. Collins, can you address those overruns where she's declaring or stated? Could you address those issues or are we, what she addresses, that's true?
Yeah, we, we, we are not. So specific to, um, the parking deck and to the arena, the conversations early on centered around estimates versus budgets. Right, there were some estimates that were put out. Um, the term budget was used, but there really were no budgeted funds until the estimates came in and the bids came back. I think specific to the arena and the demolition, those conversations were that the budget would be about eight million dollars. The, um, the estimates were about eight million dollars. That budget come in, came in around four. That left an remaining four million dollars. As we go through that process, um, there were change orders that were made, but they did not exceed the, the budgeted amount of the eight million dollars. Obviously, when those projects come on, you approve the, um, contracts, but that work, we knew there was going to be some overage in that, and that's why that balance was left in that project specifically for that. So estimates and budgets are a little different, but if we were to report, report financials, budget versus what was actually expended specifically to that work, we're about six, about two million under budget from the original budget conversations that we had. I know on the, um, construction of the parking deck, there were some overages there, but those were a part of, um, some, some transactions that were made as a part of, um, items that were unforeseen. Those things came up, and I believe those were engineered, and they were included in contingency funds in the construction budget for that project.
All right, thank you. And, um, Madam Assistant Clerk, um, I was, regular clerk is getting ready to canvass the votes, but can you address those issues that she was talking about the election, if you can?
Yes, the inactive status on some voters for the runoff election was, um, on the Secretary of State's end, and that was addressed by, um, a news conference last week. Um, as far as district lines changing, that is always going to be the case for a city election because the district lines are different than they are for all other. Um, all the voting locations were in place. At the time, they were required to be by law with one emergency change. And everything else.
And their registered voter did receive a card in the mail?
Yes.
Of their polling location, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, resolution is held over. Twenty-one, twelve, twelve. Authorized contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for design of signalized intersection improvements. Twenty-one, twelve, thirteen. Authorized contract with Kim Lee Horn for design of signalized intersection improvements on Old Shell Road. Zero-eight, twelve, fourteen through, excuse me. Zero-eight, twelve, twenty-three. Are approving purchase orders to, well, item-based bid for medical oxygen and purchase orders to environmental systems research for annual renewal of software and support services to Hardy Chevrolet Buick for Chevrolet Tahos, to truck equipment sales for Ford pickup trucks, to sansome equipment for dump trailer. Zero-nine, twelve, twenty-four. Transfer funds from general fund to capital improvements fund. Twenty-one, twelve, twenty-six. Authorized contract, thank you, with Anderson Delaney for racket stringer services. Twenty-one, twelve, twenty-seven. Authorized contract with McCarran Services for parking shuttle services for the cruise terminal. Zero-one, twelve, thirty-one. Authorized memorandum of understanding with Port City Transit for services to operate the city's transit system.
So moved.
Member, proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, thirty-four, zero, four, seven, through sixty-four, zero, forty-eight.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of ordinance thirty-four dash zero, four, seven, with the other ordinance, uh, being laid over for one week.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
Thirty-four, zero, forty-seven. Ordinance to levy a local excise tax and require business licenses for the sale of consumable vapor products in the corporate limits and police jurisdiction of the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolution is being introduced, thirty-one, twelve, thirty-two, through twenty-seven, twelve, sixty-seven.
Oh, sorry. Uh, moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions, as read.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Woods.
Um, are we going to need to take twenty-seven, twelve, sixty-seven, uh, later in the agenda, or?
Oh, that's the, uh, canvassing.
Yeah, we can just take it up. Now, now we suspend the rules now and then come back to it later.
Yes, sir.
All right, another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
Thirty-one, twelve, thirty-two. Authorized the mayor to apply, accept and receive a grant from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. Sixty thousand dollars, no local match. Thirty-one, twelve, thirty-three. Authorized the mayor to apply, accept and receive a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance in support of the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Student Teachers and Officers Preventing School Violence Program. Up to one million dollars, no local match. Thirty-seven, twelve, thirty-four through thirty-seven, twelve, thirty-eight. Are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-one license to Rear Pocket on Sage Avenue for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Mobile County Wildlife and Conservation Association Oyster Bar on Monroe Street for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises-only license to Hop In Food Mart on Doffin Island Parkway for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Bamboo Japanese Steakhouse Restaurant on Cody Road South and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Thai Chili on Museum Drive. Forty, twelve, thirty-nine and twelve, forty are fixing costs for demolition of the structures at Good Street and Old Shell Road. Forty-six, twelve, forty-one. Honorarily rename Holt Road to honorary Albert Pep Way, the second way. Fifty-eight, twelve, forty-two and twelve, forty-three are declaring weeds noxious, weedling group sixteen, sixty-nine, and assessing costs for removal of weeds. Repeat weedling group ninety-three. Sixty, twelve, forty-four. Approval award of special bonus to the administrative services employee of the month. And twenty-seven, twelve, sixty-seven. Declare the results of the September twenty-third, twenty-
Wait, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna have to move that to the-
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Davis.
I move that we move, uh, item twenty-seven, twelve, sixty-seven to the end of the agenda after call for public hearings.
Second.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Resolution is being introduced, twenty-one, twelve, forty-five, through twenty-one, twelve, sixty-six.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions zero-one, twelve, forty-seven, twelve, forty-nine, twelve, fifty, twelve, fifty-two, and twelve, fifty-three.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Um, Madam Clerk, if you could read zero-one, twelve, forty-seven individually. This is just, this is just to bring it up today, isn't it?
Yes.
It's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, bring it up, just do it separately.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
Zero-one, twelve, forty-seven. Authorized amendment to Port City Transit Pension Plan Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I don't think this is a good idea for our city. I think we should take this opportunity to address this longstanding pension issue that exists with transit union and this new contract with VIA. Um, I think, you know, when, i- i- it's commonplace when you change, um, employment, or change jobs, that there are going to be changes to the retirement plan or structure. The city made a commitment many years ago to commit to pensions for employees, and I think the city should stand by those and honor those and continue to fund those. But, uh, we, we're making substantial train, uh, changes in public transit. We, we're, we're currently spending, I think our monthly finance report says that we, we overspent a million dollars on public transit, and this adds additional cost to our already rising cost. I think it's an opportunity that we should take now to modify this plan. So today, I, I won't be in support of this.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
I don't pass, Mr. White.
If there's no objection, I'll take the remainder together. Zero-eight, twelve, forty-nine. Approved purchase order to Cheryl T. Holyfield for Federal Transit Administration Grant Reporting Services. Zero-eight, twelve, fifty. Approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for motorcycle technology mounts. Zero-eight, twelve, fifty-two. Approved purchase order to Lon Lewis Ford of the Shoals for Ford Bronco. Zero-eight, twelve, fifty-three. Approved purchase order to Primary Arms for body armor.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings, forty-one, twelve, sixty-five. Call for public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at six hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred West I sixty-five Service Road scout, south, scheduled for November fourth.
So moved.
Second. Proportional movement, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings called.
Doing that announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Davis.
No announcements.
District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Announcements.
District Six, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I just, uh, last night had the opportunity to stop by and, uh, and take a look. Uh, Greelot Road from Dawes all the way down to, to Cody's in the, in the process of being repaved. So did want to just caution everybody in District Six as you're going here and fro, to be on the lookout for that. But on there, last night, there was, uh, some changes of routes that you kind of have to make to accommodate the, the repaving. But, um, I just want to make everyone aware that it's in the, in process at the moment. And then also too, didn't want to, I, I want to thank Commissioner Doitt. This is part of the pay-as-you-go plan, uh, that, that was approved. And, and always, I'll, I'll just remind everyone that regardless of whatever ballot, whenever you get voted, always make sure to flip it over because that's, that's where those pay-as-you-goes are. So definitely don't want to miss a, miss a, um, a vote when it comes to that. And that's it for me, thank you.
Uh, State Attorney.
So, Mr. President, I was just making sure that we're, we're all going to take up thirty-four, zero, four, seven today?
Already been approved.
Okay, that's what I'm making sure of.
District One, Councilman Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, I had the opportunity to head to DC with, um, President Small. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we got the resources, um, learned some great information and bring down to Mobile to make sure that we can move the city forward. So I was grateful for that opportunity. Um, and then, um, this past week, um, I missed the great, um, Gospel Fest that was located at the Dawes Community Center this past Friday. But I want to give a big shout out to the Trixie Gospel, um, community for hosting this event. And thank you to, um, John Neil of Flor Chors for participating and University of Mobile, Voices of Mobile. It was a great event from what I'm hearing. Um, and it was free and it was open to the public. So awesome job to everyone that made that happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Pena. And District Four, uh, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to everybody who went out and voted, uh, in our most recent election. I, I want to, I take great pride in, in being the representative of District Four. It's a great honor to me. Um, but it also makes me feel even better that the turnout in District Four was higher than any other district. Um, but it also makes me feel even better that the turnout in District four was higher than any other district. And, you know, our folks are paying attention, and I really appreciate, uh, them going out and vote. Also want to acknowledge that we have Mayor-elect Spuro Cheragatis here in the, here in the audience with us. If anybody could stand up, give him a round of applause. Congratulations. I know we all look forward to working with you, and we look forward to a smooth transition. I know, uh, based on the conversations I've had, that you will be totally included in that transition plan, and we look forward to continuing the progress that we've made over the years as soon as you walk in the door. So congratulations again. Look forward to working with you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just want to let everybody know that, um, if you have passed by Langen Park and looked toward the lake, you have seen big equipment out there. So we are mobilizing equipment to begin the dredging. More equipment is coming in today. So if you've got any kids that really like to see the heavy machinery and watch them in action, now's the time to get a look at those big pieces of equipment. I know a lot of kids like that. We are hoping we can start the actual digging this week. It really kind of depends on a lot of variables. But it is coming, and it is coming very soon, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of that in action and, of course, the results. Uh, in the meantime, be aware that traffic is being rerouted out at the park to make way for all of this equipment and for the work that's being done. But go take a look at it. Uh, I'm really excited to see all of this happening. And also, of course, if you don't know, the Gulf Coast Challenge is this week. We have multiple events going on citywide, including a parade on, uh, Saturday morning that a lot of us will be participating in. So tickets are still available for the game, but come on out and participate in a lot of these activities with the, um, Gulf Coast Challenge and, uh, support this great game. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and to the citizens of Mobile. Um, on this evening, um, the mayor, uh, Sandy Stimson and the Mobile City Council and other past previous council members and administration, and we will be celebrating, uh, forty years of the Zogby Act on this evening. Uh, this year marks the fortieth anniversary of the Zogby Act, landmark legislation that transformed the Mobile system of governance. It was enacted in nineteen eighty-five. The act replaced the three-commissional form of government with a mesh council structure ushering in a new era of representative democracy for Mobile. For, uh, for decades, uh, the American Council Government established by the Zogby Act has provided Mobile citizens with greater voice and accountability in local decision-making. This transition represented not just a change in government structure, but a commitment to more responsive and inclusive civic leadership. As we reflect on forty years under this framework, we honor the vision of those who had championed this reform and recognize the lasting impact the Zogby Act has had on Mobile development, governments, and community life. And on next week, council meeting would not be, uh, held. We will resume council meeting on October the fourteenth, I believe it is. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to re, Mr. President.
Yes.
I move to recess this meeting to reconvene, uh, when the clerk gets back.
Twelve noon.
Okay. All right.
Second.
All right. Uh, proportional movement, second in the discussion. Okay, okay, we did pre-council. Yeah, the state law, uh, tells us that we had to canvass the vote at twelve noon, so we would be back at twelve noon to canvass the votes.
Okay. All right.
We see each other at twelve noon.
Got a call for a question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion, on the motion to adjourn until twelve o'clock.
Yeah. Recession. All, all in favor? All opposed? We recess to twelve noon.